Osman is absent. Cashman?
Present.
Jenkins?
Present.
Chuck Tai?
Present.
Kofsky?
Present.
Palmasano?
Present.
Vice Chair Chowdhury?
Present.
And Chair Chavez?
Present.
There are nine members present.
Present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Today, we have six items on the agenda in addition to our reports of committees that have met this cycle. Item number two is from our settlement agreement and consent decree oversight subcommittee, and I will turn the meeting over to President Payne as a chair of that committee for that portion of the meeting. I'll also add that this meeting must conclude by 4:00 PM today so that the notice meeting of the planning commission can meet later this afternoon. We will start by receiving public comment related to the city's actions in the case involving Davis Maturi and John Sawchak. Before I proceed to open the public comment period, I want to review a few procedural matters. If you have written comments or materials to submit, please give those to the clerk on either side at the registration table or at the end of the dais. We also have printed comment forms available at the registration table if you'd like to submit a comment on this proposal and have that included in the public record of this matter. I would also encourage everyone to take advantage of submitting your comments in other ways. The easiest way to submit your comments and ensure they are added to the public record is to send those from the city's website at minneapolis.mn.gov-publiccomment. All submitted comments will be included in the public record related to the city's actions in the cases in this case. We will be taking speakers in the order that they are registered. If you would like to testify, I invite you to register your name with the clerks at the table in the hallway outside this chamber. Every speaker should have an assigned number. We will be calling speakers by number. Because we are limited on available seating in this room, there is an overflow room where the public can monitor this meeting. If you're registered to speak but aren't able to sit in the chamber, please head toward the chamber as we get close to your speaker number. Each registered speaker will be given two minutes to address the committee. We have a timer available to help speakers monitor their use of time. We ask that you wrap up your comments before your time has expired so that we can accommodate all speakers today. We also ask that everyone be respectful of all speakers and all opinions offered. I understand that we have 20 people already registered to speak. Again, before I open the floor, I invite anyone who hasn't already registered who wishes to speak to register with the clerks at the table in the hallway outside this chamber. We'll ask each speaker to self-identify for the public record before you begin your comments. With that, we're ready to open the public hearing. The first five speakers who are registered to speak are... And I'll get a list. No worries, we're getting the list, but we have 20 people at least at a minimum already signed up. So, thank you all for being here. Thank you. All right. First person on the list is Howard Dotson. And then we're gonna have Brenda Short, Dave Bickin, Janet Nye, and then Jake Luna. Howard?
Thank you. Good afternoon, councilmembers. I've shared with you the safety pins. They're here. I invite every council member to consider wearing a safety pin. After the first election, we wore this pin as a sign of solidarity. This came from the UK Brexit when the Pakistani community felt like they had bullseyes of hate upon them. So, it's time to bring the safety pin back as we face some challenging times and people feeling not safe. So, I've been a police chaplain for four departments from 2002 to 2017. With that perspective, I've watched Chief O'Hara on this journey since before he was even sworn in. We need Chief O'Hara to stay the course, what we're going through with the consent decree, with the state court-ordered reforms. And it can feel cathartic to make a statement, but there needs to be an investigation, there needs to be due process, and I'm confident that whatever they find in disciplinary actions will be executed by Chief O'Hara and his leadership. I was over in St. Paul one day, and I heard from their leadership there that they bring folks to ERs for psych beds, and the average wait is 25 hours. Without a civil commitment, there's limitations of what law enforcement can do with folks that are struggling with mental health. Our mental health care system is broken. This is connected to the encampments, it's connected to this tragic situation. So, I applaud the councilmember's efforts to look at tangible solutions. Councilmember Jenkins, your town hall was spot on. So, I just encourage people to stay the course, and the truth will prevail.
Thank you. I also want to note for the public record that we've been joined by Councilmember Wan Lee. Next up, we have Brenda Short.
Good afternoon. It's been four years, five months, and 18 days since George Floyd passed away in the city of Minneapolis. Again, for the people in the back, it's been four years, five, five months, and 18 days since George Floyd died in the city of Minneapolis. I can't understand how we let another black man feel unsafe in the city of Minneapolis. We knew better, but we still are not doing better. You asked us, what actions should we do? Today, I'm asking for take the both of them out. Take the mayor. He took the chance on the chief. He needs to go. And the chief knew what was happening. He was over all of these people, and he still stood on what he stood. He made a statement that he didn't want to go to this man's house. But if it was, the tables was turned, and the people was black, that door would have been open. I'm tired of being scared in my own neighborhood. I'm tired of us not being heard. I am tired. We are sick and tired. Enough is enough is enough. Thank you. My name is Brenda Short. I'm running for mayor for this city. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Next up, we have Dave Bickin, and then Janet Nye, Jake, Erica Thorne, and then Angel.
Thank you for this opportunity to present to the meeting on behalf of Communities United Against Police Brutality. My name is Dave Bickin, Ward Eight. On October 31st, a coalition of police accountability organizations submitted a demand for an independent third-party investigation into the MPD handling of the Sawchak matter by a police practices expert selected by the community. The city council approved a request to the city auditor to undertake an investigation. We wish to speak to the parameters of this investigation. We emphasize that while the proposal is for the city auditor's office to oversee the investigation, it must be conducted by an independent police practices expert who is neutral and with no history of prior contracts with the city. This precludes such groups as Hillard Hines, Jensen Hughes, Jones Day, Wiley Reber, Antonio Oftaly with Leadership for a Networked World, and others. John Sawchak terrorized and attacked his neighbors since at least 2016. Much of his conduct was based on racism towards neighbors of color, including Mr. Maturi. Neighbors reported dozens of incidents to police, prompting 10 petitions for harassment, restraining orders, five other criminal complaints, and three arrest warrants. At one point, Sawchak slashed the tires on an MPD squad car and pointed the knife at a police officer, but not arrested. Despite this repeated criminal conduct and outstanding warrants, Sawchak was not arrested. One commander told the Maturi family they would not arrest Mr. Sawchak due to, quote, "officer's safety," unquote, leaving the family and neighbors to fend for themselves against this dangerous conduct.
We appreciate your time.
Janet Nye will finish out our comments.
That we have is Janet, and just for the public, I'll let folks go over five seconds, but after that, I will be calling on the next person. I really do appreciate your time here today. Welcome, Janet, and thanks for your testimony, Dave.
The repeated failure to address Mr. Sawchak's conduct culminated in his attempted murder of his neighbor, Mr. Maturi. Mr. Maturi survived but is still recovering from his serious injuries. Hennepin County Attorney Moriarty secured a warrant for Sawchak's arrest the next day. Yet, even after the shooting, his neighbor, Mr. Sawchak, remained comfortably in his apartment for five days. Throughout that time, Chief O'Hara made repeated excuses as to why police had failed to arrest Sawchak during numerous contacts with him prior to the shooting, then blamed the community, the Hennepin County attorney, and even the victim for the MPD's failure to arrest him even after the shooting. Members of the city administration either remained silent or repeated the excuses. In essence, rather than addressing the problem, city leaders engaged in public relations damage control efforts. Finally, in response to community pressure, on the evening, October 27th, 28th, Minneapolis police engaged in a dangerous and disruptive nighttime warrant service, and Mr. Sawchak was arrested. The repeated failures in the Sawchak matter point to multiple issues with MPD culture and individual accountability, as well as systemic failures. In any field, critical incidents such as this matter provide the imperative and opportunity to identify these deficiencies, determine accountability, and develop and implement solutions to prevent similar incidents. But this can only happen as a result of a thorough independent evaluation by experts. It is for these reasons that we have called for an investigation by an independent third-party police practices expert without a past relationship with the city. The necessary investigation cannot be conducted internally because it includes examination of conduct and decisions by individuals in leadership within the MPD and the city. There is a need to be thorough. There is equally a need to be timely. We are concerned with the proposed timeline of a completion date of June 2025. This timeline prolongs the injustice suffered by the Maturi family and their neighbors and leaves open a risk that a similar incident could occur in another neighborhood before preventative measures are implemented. We urge the city's auditor's office to assign this matter to the highest priority. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Next up, we have Jake Luna, Erica Thorne, Angel Bu master, and I did want to recognize Councilmember Rainbow's presence.
Is this a good distance? I want to start off with a little story. When I was simply too young to understand the gravity of these situations, at 11 years old, our community, our entire country, was given a systematic trauma by the murdering of Philando Castillo in our very own city of Minneapolis. A few years later, I, at the age of 15, finally able to recognize the gravity of the situation. One day after I turned 15, George Floyd was again, was killed in Minneapolis. Now, on October 24th, just a few weeks ago, new generations have had to go through what I went through. They've had to inherit this systematic generational trauma, and they will continue to inherit more due to these furthering of the hate crimes if we do not stop them. This is my reality. This is the reality I was born into. My reality is school shootings being a regular occurrence. My reality is seeing black people being shot for no more reason than just existing. My reality is the MPD often doing either much too little or much too much, whether it is taking almost a year to respond, or it is murdering black people over petty offenses. How many more people must die until we acknowledge this? How many more people must die until Mayor Frey, who is not here, will take accountability and say, allow for us to be saying that this is political? This is a political issue. I and others have already been traumatized. Very likely, everyone in this room has been traumatized by these situations. But we can stop future generations from being traumatized the same way I was. We can stop them from losing community members, from losing friends, from losing family. We can stop this generational trauma from being passed down to a new generation. We can stop them from being burdened by this every single day for the rest of their lives. Because if we don't, if we do not step up, if we do not tell the MPD that they do not have the jurisdiction, that they cannot do this, that they must protect and they must serve, then we will all be doomed real, real, real soon.
Thank you. Next up, we have Erica. Then we have Angel Bu master, Janelle, Stacy.
Hey, I listened to the radio like one or two days after the grievous shooting of Mr. Maturi, and may he be fully healed. And I heard our police chief say on the radio, "Well, you've got to understand our position. You know, if we had taken action before, we'd be faulted. We waited to take action, now we're being faulted." You know, Chief, we don't need you to whine. You are here to work on the MPD, to make it more effective while also retaining their humanity and stopping being systematically racist to me, my neighbors, and everyone who lives here. That's what we need from you. And I, because I have the mic, I'm happy to have it. I just want to encourage and really ask very seriously for you in the council to hear the community group that is working on the future of George Floyd Square, to listen to us, to incorporate all the great work we've done, and give us a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Angel. Welcome.
Good afternoon. What I'd like to say is thank you to the Minneapolis Police Department, the 1% that was out there on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and today, cleaning up two streets, two encampments. There's just a little bit of change that's going on, so I had to say something positive about that because it is happening. Shout out to CARE11 and Star Tribune. But in all reality, it's like this gentleman over here, who told the story is absolutely right. My parents' kids are going through the same thing, and it's unacceptable. Everywhere, it's unacceptable. I'd like to take the rest of this time, the one minute and 20 seconds, to reflect on all the people that we have lost, especially from the opioid addiction, and y'all have a good day. Thank you.
We can keep the clock on. Thank you. Welcome, Janelle.
Good afternoon. My name is Janelle Austin. I live in Bryant Neighborhood in Ward Eight, near George Floyd Square. I want to begin by quoting a CBS News article that read, "Maturi is now hoping that this attack could very well have taken his life, that this attack that could have very well taken his life is what it will take to finally get some justice." It should not take a near-death experience, or a death, as in the case of George Floyd, to finally get something that looks like justice. As black people in Minnesota, we are tired of being subject to the forces of white supremacy that do not allow us to live in peace. So, when we march and cry, "No justice, no peace," it is in part because the absence of our justice means that we do not even get to live in peace. This reality is also why in George Floyd Square, we say, "No justice, no streets." I have a neighbor who, at 3:30 this morning, suffered from his front steps being set on fire by a known perpetrator of setting fires, who is being tracked by MFD. But because he either has to volunteer to receive preventative intervention or commit a severe infraction or crime to be stopped, he continues to threaten the safety of our neighbors. The police system is broken. We know this. The DOJ showed us this. Justice means that black people do not have to ask over and over and over again to be protected by a police system that my mother calls Operation How Do You Like Them Apples? Whatever Mr. Maturi asks for from the city, he should get and then some. And you need to fix the system or dismantle it altogether and start over, letting black people decide what safety looks like because apparently, not until black people in Minneapolis feel safe, will we all be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy. Then we have Anna, and then Marsha. Stacy, hi. Sorry, I'll speak louder. Thank you, Stacy. It's good to see you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm Stacy Gurian Sherman. I'm a resident of Ward Nine, and I'm also one of the founders and steering committee members of Minneapolis for a Better Police Contract. Thank you to the city council for scheduling this public comment on the shooting of Mr. Davis Maturi as a result of what Jelani Hussain, executive director of CARE Minnesota, has rightly called, quote, "epic failures of MPD." These failures are not episodic, but as we know from both state and federal investigations, they are systemic. Four years after the torture and murder of Mr. Floyd, we see the culture continues that allows for Mr. Maturi's to keep happening. And we see this in excruciating detail from Mr. Maturi's own emails, and we have these emails thanks to Celeste Robinson and Liam Temple, city council staff. So, thank you to them. Here is what Mr. Maturi sent to MPD on October 17th, five days before he was shot and three days after Mr. Sawchak pointed a firearm at him. Quote, "This is about the fourth or fifth incident with a weapon I've reported and probably the 30th time I've called 911. It continues to get more and more violent by the day. I am not confident in the pursuit of Sawchak, given that he was detained and despite a warrant, they still let him go." Mr. Maturi went on to talk about and send an email that said, "Am I not human like you?" How in the world do you have somebody say that and then be shot because of the people that are meant to protect? I want to thank the city council for connecting the dots and having on this agenda the report on the civil unrest, the George Floyd squared matter, and issues with Alifa. Alifa is holding its first public comments, or supposedly tomorrow, but they put out a press release five days ago that says, quote, "There will be no public input at these meetings." I have their press release, and I have synopses of stories for the record I'd like to submit for the record. We need to have input, and we need to have it now. Thank you.
We have Anna, 21, Marsha, 22, Bobby, 23, Nikima, number 24, and then Keith, number 25. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Anna Newcomb, and I live in the Lindale Neighborhood, and in fact, I have lived most of my 64 years in the alley behind John Sawchak. And I am here to publicly state that not only did the police fail our neighborhood, they failed Mr. Maturi in a way that is hard to comprehend. John has terrorized our neighborhood for years. I do not use that term lightly. Our fear is that he will be released again to our community or another community. Yes, John has mental health issues. None of these issues prevent him from planning, from carrying out systematic acts of terrorism and aggression. He is not a new problem in our neighborhood. I have been on the LNA board. I have been on the Crime and Safety Committee. Nothing happens. Why, and my neighbor, 70-plus years old, was threatened by John with a 2x4. Were we notified that he had a gun? She is in direct sight from his window into hers. Was anybody notified that this man has a gun and is shooting it? We heard about the incident of Mr. Maturi from the news. This is disgusting, and it really has to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Marsha.
Hello. I often say that no matter what kind of budget constraints we have, the city's coffers are limitless when it comes to being able to hurt black folks, and I'm gonna tell you why I think that now in the incident with Mr. Maturi. My daughter lives directly across the street from Mr. Sawchak. He has terrorized that neighborhood for years, and I'm different from everybody. It ain't even about Brian O'Hara. It's been years. Y'all, if you want to know why they didn't go in there, his apartment is not hermetically sealed. It's because the city of Minneapolis always needs a boogeyman. They always need a bad guy to justify the police budget. They always need to be able to say, "Here we come to save the day," and that was a way for them to keep them liberals in the Lynn Hurst neighborhood from needing them. Y'all don't miss the water till the well runs dry. But what happens when the person that they thought was just crazy but relatively harmless actually commits harm? Y'all, he was a homeowner. The man owned property. But did you notice, nobody said these crimes were committed near property. Now, if it had been an encampment, they would have said it was near an encampment. If it had been near George Floyd Square, they would have said it was near George Floyd Square. But my daughter was army crawling days before he was arrested and sending me video because I trained her well. Days before, there were police out there with long arms before he actually got arrested. I got all the video, and I've been good, I ain't put it online yet. And I'm telling you now, if Charlie Mack can get $30,000 for the grief and pain of witnessing George Floyd's death, what about all the neighbors in the Lynn Hurst neighborhood? Y'all, the taxpayers are about to be paying up, so prepare.
Thank you. Welcome, Bobby. Then we have Nikima, Keith, and then Kay. Bobby, then it's you, Nikima. And then we have Keith, and then Kay.
I'm Bobby Hall. I live in the Central Neighborhood. I am George Floyd Square Chairman of the Board liaison, and I've been fighting the police department since 1992, when Mike Kersten turned his headlights off and ran my son over and then beat him up. And then he got promoted after he ran the second kid over with Charles Belton's bodyguard and chauffeur. Robert Olson said, "Lack of evidence. We can't find the bike he ran over." They dismissed the case after they found him guilty. They paid my son $13,000 for both knees being broken. And we... How do you have a police officer that beats kids up after they run them over? I asked for police reform back then. We asked for help with the police department since 1992. And what did they do? They promoted him. They sponged his record. And this is how we do all of our police officers. How many officers need to stop and get reviewed and find out how many of these are criminals? You turn your headlights off and you run a kid over that's premeditated vehicular homicide. Why did he get a promotion? And why are you still on the same page with your police officers? They are criminals and crooks, and you don't want to... You don't want to do a survey on them. You did a four-month, four-year, five-month survey on the George Floyd Square to give us a building, a community building. We got a community building. It's a bathroom you only use 20%. We got a community building, it's a bathroom, you only use 20% of the building. Let's take public domain and take that building back, and let's take the money for the George Floyd Square and reform the Police Department. Let's do a survey on you! You spent all that money on us, let's do a survey on you! You're the problem, not us! You make us the bad guys, and you promote these people, these police officers are killing us!
Thanks Bobby. Next up, we have Nikima.
And this ain't my first time up here talking, y'all!
Good afternoon. Thank you all for giving us space on the agenda today to talk about these issues. I'm sure that all of you are aware that we have continued problems with the Minneapolis Police Department. Of course, Mayor Jacob Frye should be here. Of course, Chief Brian O'Hara should be here. And the new Commissioner, Todd Barnett, should be here as well, to hear what the public has to say, to hear their frustration. I am one of those folks who's calling for the Chief to be fired. I'm not going to give him a pass, because he knew the job that he was signing up for, and that was to help reform the culture of the Minneapolis Police Department. And instead of him exhibiting the kind of leadership that we asked for, we've had to deal with lies from him, from when he sat in the room while Tyler Timberlake, an officer in Virginia, who had kicked a defenseless black man after George Floyd, wound up costing the city money, and guess what? He got hired by Chief Brian O'Hara at the Minneapolis Police Department. That is a problem, when we're talking about a cultural shift. And then today, some news came out that Lou Bellamy's family settled a lawsuit with Hennepin County for $3.4 million. Lou Bellamy was a black man in this community, the family of the folks who founded Penumbra Theater, one of the powerful theaters in our state and in our country, and they let that man die. Right? The problem, though, aside from the fact that the condition was treatable, is the fact that a deputy by the name of Lucas Weatherspoon sat there smiling as Lou Bellamy was writhing in pain. Earlier this year, we wrote an op-ed in the Star Tribune, and we pointed out that Lucas Weatherspoon had been hired by the Minneapolis Police Department. So tell me, how is that going to lead to a culture change when the same thing happens over and over again? We want to see justice and accountability. And the Chief must go.
Thank you. Welcome up. Hi Keith.
Council President Chavez, Council Persons, thank you for giving me a chance to speak. I find it outrageous that a department that has a $230 million-plus budget, who's asking for 26 more million, can't do their job. And it's not just this one incident. For example, Sawchak gets over a year on just this particular case, and yet Amir Locke, who wasn't on any warrant, who wasn't involved in any crime, got six seconds from when they kicked in the door. A black man! Travis Jordan, who was sitting in his own home, called out by police, shot. Native. Chashar Vu, sitting in his own home, mental health crisis. They fired over 54 shots at that man and killed him. Asian! So why is it that they can take their sweet time for Mr. Sawchak, who has 16 years of assault with weapons history, including his own family, including Minneapolis Police Department, and they're gonna knock on the door? Come on now!
Thank you. Next up, we have number 26, Kay. And then number 27, Kelly. Number 28, Ray Kurt.
My name is Kay. My grandmother suffered at the hands of a CIA-backed government. CIA will go into foreign countries, support the worst types of riffraff they can find. It's no surprise when I look in my backyard, and I see a man with a history of assault, a history of horrific actions against black and brown people in his neighborhood, let free, ignored. The crimes that he does go unheard, the pain that he brings, unpunished. It's unacceptable, but more than that, has a lot of precedent. So keep up the same work y'all been doing. You know, keep it up, keep it up. We all know what it is. We all know what it is, and we here, we ready. You know, we gonna keep coming. We don't need to be here begging for dignity from an institution complicit in our deaths, in our imprisonment, in our slander. That's all I got. Let's leave the rest of the time for the people who have passed.
I'm sorry, number 19.
You're still on the list. I'm just, I called the wrong numbers, but like, the list is still in order. Next up, we have Kelly, then Ray Kurt, then Jenny, and then Eliza.
Hi, my name is Kelly Joyce. I live four blocks from where this incident happened. And the only phrase that I keep running through my mind is "no good cops in a racist system." And I don't take that phrase lightly. I'm an engineer, I know all about systems. I'm in charge of product safety. And when something goes wrong with my product, I'm dragged into court, my company's dragged into court, or fined, and we're required to tear down the very system that created that product. When I think about corrective action and preventative action, I see none of these actions in the MPD. I see a huge, broken system that can't be fixed. And I know all about broken systems that can't be fixed. You have to rebuild it, you have to start over. It's not gonna work investigating, it's not gonna work auditing, it's not gonna work firing the Chief of Police, because another racist Chief of Police is gonna come along. No good cops in a racist system.
Thank you. Number 18, Ray Kurt Johnson. Number 19, Jenny Jones. And our 20, Eliza Wesley. 18, Ray Kurt. And then 19, yes Jenny. And then 20, Eliza.
My name is Ray Kurt Johnson. I'm every black man, I'm all of that, anything you can think of, I've done and done that. I'm on a musical solidarity tour from Washington DC. I've traveled the world making music, here and there and everywhere, and I've landed here in Minneapolis. It's a beautiful place, it really is. Beautiful people, and, but the system is the system. And I appreciate, yeah, the city in progress from addressing, at least acknowledging, the systematic killing of black people and everybody else, and it's nationwide, but we can complain about it. I come with some solutions, just in qualified immunity. If you just end that, and then they would be accountable. And they gotta raise more money, we love money, oh, everybody love money. So they can pay for their liability insurance, like every other professional. Imagine that. We love our jobs, we want to be professional. If you just approach it that way, maybe a little bit of accountability, and we can spread some more love. It's all about that. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. 19, Jenny. 20, Eliza.
Thank you for hearing me today. I want to talk about George Floyd Square. When city officials on city time murder a man, it is not up to the city, they do not have the moral authority to decide how that man is memorialized, nor how that epicenter of a global justice movement looks. This effort must be community-led. What the city can do is provide the integrative health services and housing for the neighborhood that were asked for when Councilmember Jenkins asked, "What does justice look like?" There is no rush to reconstruct this street and erase what happened. It is not about the majority of opinion, it is about doing what is right. We have one shot to get this right, and we are moving at the speed of justice.
Thank you. Eliza, number 20. And then we'll have number 21, Yolanda. Number 22, Julia. Number 23, John Thompson.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Eliza Wesley, better known as, aka, Gay Keeper at George Floyd Square. I want to say today to you guys, you guys got us here, you listen to us. Well, I tell peoples all the time, that you guys write things on a piece of paper. That's what's important to you guys, the piece of paper. You send the paper out, you make sure we don't get the paper, because y'all think black folks don't read. But I began to learn to read about you guys. I'm originally from Greenville, Mississippi, where Minnesota's not so nice. Y'all, slavery under the rug. That's what we got here. The white men are slaving our black peoples. Not only that, you guys are trained to target black peoples. When you go to the gun range, and I keep telling everybody, you don't see a white man, you don't see a blue man, you don't see an Asian man, you see a black man, you're talking to that. It's black. Not only that, we done had three deaths. Jama Clark, temporary with clothes. Philando Castile, the peoples didn't do nothing. Then y'all hauled at George Floyd Square, where the heart of all black men's was there. There was all black men's at the George Floyd Square. And ever since then, you guys have been talking black peoples. Y'all, what is we doing here? And then for our black men's, y'all not doing anything to help our black men's, all y'all doing is trying to tear our black men's down, and take them away from their homes, take them away from their families. Then y'all did Rico and Recreteria, in the hardcore of a city, that where y'all done killed the black men, take all the black men's away from us, so they can't stand with us in no type of way. You guys gotta give us justice. We shut the streets down, and the streets is still ours. They're still ours. And if we have to shut the streets down, we will. We will shut the streets down again, because you know why? It's taxpayers' money. And y'all know if the streets shut down, it's gonna shut down, and it will. It will. Y'all keep throwing us under the rug. We not rugs. It's 13 of y'all, Jesus had 24 disciples, but he got down here at 12. So it's 13 of y'all up here, so now what y'all gonna do? Jesus had 24 when he started. And when I come, I speak about the word of God, and God gonna spit the word out, see what y'all gonna do?
Next, we have Yolanda, number 21. Julia, number 22. John Thompson, number 23.
Hi.
Hi. Are you replacing Yolanda?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
My name is Tashira Garraway, fiance of Justin Tiggen, and founder of Families Supporting Families Against Police Violence. I stand here today because I'm standing for a man that, I stand here on righteousness first and foremost, but I stand here for a man that was treated less than a human being in our community. The reason why Mr. Maturi's shooter, I refuse to say his name, was left out in the community because there is no value for a black life here in Minnesota. And it has been shown time and time again. The reason why the shooter was left in the community for five days is because he has white privilege. Because he was a white supremacist that spit out racial slurs over and over again. White supremacy and white privilege is live and well in Minnesota, and anybody that doesn't stand up and speak out against it is complicit, and the blood is on your hands. I hope that you think about your loved one and your family member when you think of Mr. Maturi, and how someone attempted to kill him, a hate crime happened right here in Minnesota, just like George Floyd was a hate crime. Just like the father of my son, Justin Tiggen, was a hate crime right here in Minnesota. Just like Amir Locke was a hate crime. Because they knew that it was a black building, or black families that, when they shot him and killed him. So we are fighting white supremacy and white privilege, and we need all of you to stand against that. So what are you going to do? Ask yourself when you leave here today, what am I going to do to stand against white supremacy and white privilege? And FYI, you don't have to be white to push the white supremacy agenda. You don't have to be white to push the white privilege agenda. Understand that. You can be black, you can look like me, and still push the white supremacy and the white privilege agenda. So what are you going to do as a human being to stand against that? Thank you.
Thank you, Tashira. And if, Tashira, if you can sign up with the clerk's... Thank you, Tashira. If you can sign up with the clerk's office, just so we have the record, I don't think you signed up, so... Thank you.
Hi, welcome. Hello. My name is Julia Johnson. I live in Ward 8. First, I want to say my heart goes out to David Maturi and his family. It is unsurprising, yet it is rage-inducing as ever to learn that the local police, MPD, refused to intervene and prevent violence, or hold John Sawchak accountable. What's important, I have known since a young age that the police around the country are a crucial part of a corrupt, racist, oppressive system. And I know this because in 1981, the Ku Klux Klan, they knocked on my grandma's door, where she was raising her seven children, including my mother. They said my family had to leave that night, or they would be murdered. My grandma packed what she could, and she fled. What's important to know about this story is that the head of the Klan was also the sheriff of that town. And so, you know, my family, they always let me know not to expect help from the police, or other, you know, servants of the public good. Whether it's community violence or hate crime, to them, it was all part of the plan to continue to oppress us, and to continue to leave us unsafe. So it was very unsurprising whenever I saw the reports and the outrage about the unabashed violence of Sawchak going completely unchecked, and with pitiful attempts from MPD to intervene. Because Sawchak is part of the plan. He is a vigilante doing the work of the MPD to keep us in line, to know our place. I know that the system is not here to protect us, it is here to oppress us. The lip service that Chief O'Hara gave is to gaslight us, and to deflect from the fact that a proud white supremacist was the one who did this, and proud white supremacists are serving on the Minneapolis Police Department. I ask, I ask everyone here to root out the corruption, to root out the corruption, to find who those people are, and to ensure that our voices are heard, and they are not being drowned out by behind-the-closed-door scenes whenever we have white supremacists in positions of power who are ensuring that our people are terrorized. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. And next, we have number 23, John Thompson. Number 25, actually, the person just spoke. Then we have number 26, Reed. Number 27, Eliza.
Historically, violence and discrimination against black men in Minneapolis, and the slow response from the justice system reflect the longstanding racial inequalities rooted in systemic racism here in Minneapolis, and as in much in the United States. Incidences have led to numerous cases where black people have not only received justice after experiencing violence. Minneapolis in particular has a legacy of discriminatory practices such as redlining, segregation, and exclusion from economic opportunities, which led to marginalized black communities facing harsher treatment by law enforcement and... And George Floyd in 2020 was one of the most visible examples sparking what I call a racial uprising here in the state of Minnesota. Additionally, there have been historically under reporting of, and under investigation of crimes against black people here in the state of Minnesota. Individuals further exacerbating community distrust in law enforcement. The issue stems from a couple of complex legal standards around hate crimes. And I'm just gonna stop there because I wanted to like ask, why isn't this being investigated as a hate crime? When does a white man get to shoot a black man like a nigger, treat him like a nigger, call him a nigger, and nobody's calling for this to be investigated as a hate crime? This is a hate crime. And I don't want to hear the media saying anything about his mental health because when I think of Amir, when I think of Kobe Heisler, I think of mental health. When I think of the lady who said, "I rebuke you Satan in the name of Jesus" and was shot, I think of mental health. This man didn't have a mental health problem, he had a racism problem. And I thank you, Councilman Jenkins, for being firm on your stance with the police chief. I'm not asking for you to get rid of him, I'm demanding that you get rid of this police chief. You wouldn't have given Arredondo this much time or this much leverage. Thank you for your, thank you so much for having me. Thank you for having a public comment, and I appreciate y'all.
Thank you, John. We have number 26. It looks like the spelling here is an R, I think that's Ree. Coleman. R-E-E. Number 26. Number 26. Was it Lee? Okay, might be Lee. Lee Coleman? Okay, cool, we can go back to you. But otherwise, we'll move on to number 27, Eliza. Number 28, Jay.
Grace and peace, how's everyone? How's everyone? Amen, we alive. And I'm grateful to be here. What I come here to ask you and share with you is that compassion for the weak is the backbone of every society. What you do to the least, you do to me. I'm black, not comely. My hair is like wool. My feet are bronze like the sun. So they stretched me out, but still here we are again with the same thing. Money is not good for anything. You can't take it with you. You'll be sent back if you come to the throne with it. So the thing is, I saw a lot of raises in the documents. And that money could be spent on empathy classes for every officer, for every, every emergency worker. Don't take that money, you put it back where... Because the thing is, is right now, just like you did two years, four years ago, when the circle was first built on love and compassion, you said it wouldn't be here for five days, the city. But then it was here, it was here the next year, the next... And then they tried to take it away with force, but not by the power of God. Because that's who we stand for, everyone. We stand for everyone who's ever fallen. Now's your chance, what are you gonna do? Are you just gonna share the money, are you gonna share the money amongst yourself? Are you gonna go down with it, or are you gonna lift up the people? You want to redo, you want to re-envision something that you don't know the vision of in George Floyd Square? Because if you don't sit with us, you'll lose your seats. And the truth of the matter is, if you don't stand with us, again, you'll be left out in the cold, you'll lose your seat. But what are you gonna do? That's my question.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Jay. Next up, we have Jay Lani, and then we have Chantel. Jay Lani, I always saw you here, oh, there you are.
First of all, greeting of peace to everybody. Salaam alaikum, peace be upon you all. Council President Payne, Council Vice President Chuck Tai, council members. I want to start off by counting. And for the public, if they want to help me, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19. 19 times Davis Maturi's family called for help. They called 911 19 separate times. We want the system to work for everyone. We know it doesn't work for black people, but we want it to work for everyone. It is unacceptable, after the murder of George Floyd, that we are talking about a family who was nearly killed because of the inaction of the Minneapolis Police Department. What we're asking for is very clear. We want a transparent, independent investigation that looks at the entire system. How is it possible that a family calls 19 times? And the 13th time, when that call comes into the 911 operator, there should be notes to say, "This family called 13 times." The 14th time, there should be some note saying, "This is the 14th time, somebody's gotta do something." I want to know, what will it take for families in Minneapolis, particularly the black families, to get service from Minneapolis Public Police Department in the same manner that they get in Uptown and other parts of the city? That's all we're asking for. And I want to make sure that in this investigation, it's not just the chief. I want to know every single staff member who is responsible for inaction.
Next up, we have Chantel Allen. And for members that have not signed up to testify, please sign up if you're wishing to speak today. School Board Director, Chantel Allen. Oh, you're next.
My name is Chantel Allen, I'm with Black Lives Matter Twin Cities. I am, woo, don't take up my time, y'all, because I got things to say. First of all, I'm here in solidarity with the city because the city keeps calling. Now, not many of y'all were here in 2015. Maybe Councilmember Jenkins, were you here in 2015? I was here in 2015, and there was a nice crowd of community just like this who came and said, "Please, do something different." "Please stop killing us." "Please stop letting white people kill us." "Please look into the system and change policing in a hurry." We came back in 2016, came back in 2017, 2018. Thurman Byrnes got killed, Jamar Clark got killed. I mean, people kept getting killed. Racism kept happening in this city. And there was people that, the brother came up, he said, "Y'all gonna lose your jobs." I saw some of y'all was looking like, "Ah, ah, I'm politically sound, I got this." You know what? In 2016, I said that to the St. Paul City Council. I said that to the St. Paul School Board. And guess what? Not near one of them are still sitting in them seats. They looked at me like, "Oh, I'm so politically sound." But guess what? Anybody's seat can be taken. So if you're not there representing this community, expect that your seat will be gone. That's the reality of this whole work. Y'all have to listen now. Because I'm just talking politically to y'all because y'all know I do politics and whatever, right? I'm talking politically to y'all. But these people, they talking real street shit. I'm trying to tell you from a real street shit perspective that in 2015, we didn't want to see 2020 happen. We didn't want 20, when 2020 happened, it hurt my soul. Because I didn't want to see that happen. In 2018, I didn't want to see it happen. And we came back, and it still happened. What are you gonna do? What are you gonna do? How are you gonna do something different now, though?
Thank you. That completes list of registered speakers. Is there anyone who has not signed up yet that would like to address the committee? Welcome.
Hi, everyone, my name is Bridgette Stewart, a member of Ward 8. I wasn't gonna speak because I felt like everyone in the community said what was needed to be said. However, there's one missing component. I just recently came back from an AICOL conference where there was people from all over the world. Everyone in the United States and six different countries were represented. Every single panel I went to at that conference talked about Minneapolis and George Floyd and what they have done to move forward in their police departments and their law enforcement agencies after what took place in what I call home, being a born and raised Minnesotan. And I sit here, and I'm watching body language from different council members. And I'm looking at you guys, and I'm looking at your faces, and I'm trying to read the room. And what I'm seeing is a lack of concern. And what I'm seeing is a lack of discipline. What I'm seeing is, is a community that is being reflective of our city council. What I see is discord. And when I look out into community, I see that same discord. We're a mirror reflection of each other. We have got to get on one accord. We have got to move forward together. Because at the end of the day, we all want the same thing. Public safety for each and every individual. Whether you wear a blue uniform or a yellow jacket or a sweatshirt. Everybody wants to go home to their family members safely. You guys, we have got to stop putting politics at the core of everything we do. We have got to stop on 38th and Chicago trying to figure out, I said this years ago, which set do we want to be on today? Do we want to be on the wire? Or do we want to be on New Jack City? How about we just want to live in a community that is safe? Please, please, for the sake of your constituents who voted to put you in office, listen to them and give them what they deserve, which is safety.
I was talking to myself, thank you. Seeing no further speakers, I will close this public comment period. I want to thank everyone who took their time of the day to come and speak with us. I'm gonna open the floor to my colleagues that may wish to share a few words. So I'll look at the queue to see if anybody is hoping to speak. Our first call on Councilmember Wensley.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I just want to thank everyone who came today. I know this was an incredibly traumatic and challenging conversation to have for many of our residents, especially in light of the conversation that we're going to have from staff about the city's vision for George Floyd Square as we're talking about reopening a place. Right. And and yet we still haven't dealt with the fact that we're still very much racist in this city. And I, I just want to also thank Communities United Against Police Brutality and Minneapolis for a Better Police Contract for submitting a memo that we've also forwarded for, to the clerks to be attached to LAMS as well as to our city auditor to take into consideration as they're looking at the motion that we passed last week, requesting for an after-action review of the shooting of Mr. Davis Maturi. We are going to be following up with the city auditor to make sure that they give us an answer about their decision to take on an investigation independently and to take into consideration the concerns that was brought up by community members today. And we will absolutely keep you all updated on those points of inquiry that you pointed out. And I just want to let at least the public know that I know my office and a number of my colleagues are committed to continuing to work with community members to get a full understanding of how not just MPD, but the mayor's office, because I want to remind the public, and this keeps getting lost in the sauce somehow, is the mayor that oversees MPD. That is the boss. It is also the mayor's office that oversees the Office of Community Safety or the Commissioner Barnett, the highest-paid city employee here. And looking at how do we as a city take full accountability for whatever failure took place in this case and to also ensure that this does not happen for not only other residents but in particularly our black residents that continues to receive standard service at the hands of not only the police department but many of our departments at the city. So I just want to thank you all for coming out in the middle of the day, a workday, for participating in this public comment period.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have any other comments that they'd like to share today? Council President Payne.
Thank you, Chair Chavez, and thank you to everyone who came out today. I know that we wanted to have this discussion sooner. And, you know, I actually want to apologize that this is an institution that doesn't make it easy to engage with. It puts up rules and procedures to try to block progress sometimes. At least it feels that way to me. And we oftentimes get caught up in that, right? In our roles, and we hold these seats with certain responsibilities. And it is my commitment to use this role to uplift this community as much as I can within my authority. And I think that there's a lot of commitment from my colleagues to do that as well. And I'm just very grateful for all of you holding us accountable to those commitments.
All right, there isn't anybody else on Q, so I'll direct the clerk to receive and file those comments. Item number two is part of our settlement agreement in Consent decree Oversight Subcommittee. So I will turn the...